Okay, it's currently 6:33. So we will call this regular board meeting to order. We have a roll call.
Thank you.
Here.
Me, here, Sarah Geiser.
Here.
Howser.
Here.
Ken.
Eric Anderson.
Here.
We have a motion to approve.
So, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Those who know, okay, that's unanimous. So this may seem a little redundant, but we do have a different audience here. So we were grateful to honor our 21, 22 retirees, including Mark Bethke, Sue Baker, our own Mary Beth Bass, Mary Fisher, Julie Gibson, Diane Grubba, Selena Hamilton, Jackie King, Dan Bueller, Lori Olin, John Perry, Rhonda Richardson, Karen Robinson, Eric Second, Lisa Shaw, Kelly Squires, Laura Ternary, and Shelley Van Leest. Very fine group of people who have done a lot for us, for our schools, for our students. Okay. So now we will move into board recognition.
And we have two groups tonight to recognize. The first is Urbandale High School's own Music Director Ted Brimire. He's unable to be with us tonight, but I wanted to acknowledge his award. He received the inaugural, he's the inaugural recipient of the Iowa Choral Directors, Outstanding Choral Director for High School Post-Secondary Schools. This is a brand-new award this year that recognizes individuals whose work in programs at the experienced and advanced level is exemplary. The ICDA lists these criteria on its website. Consideration: It must be a current ICDA member, minimum of five years' experience, work at the high school post-secondary level exhibiting the qualities of a master teacher. Nominees who have fostered program growth, high-performance standards, musical knowledge, community engagement, and are committed to mentoring those planning careers in music will be given strong consideration. The person will be an active presence in the life of ICDA and its membership. UCSD congratulates Ted Brimire for receiving this highly esteemed and well-deserved award. We will make sure that he gets a certificate here tomorrow. We have the Carrie Chapman CAT Award. I'm not sure, are there students in the audience from the level? Yeah. So, let me go up and get those.
The Carrie Chapman CAT Award is an award that's given to high schools who are able to enroll 90% of the eligible student voters in their building. This award's been around for three years. Thirty-one schools in the state received this award recognition. Only eight of them have received it all three years, and we are proud to say that Urbandale High School is one of those sister, or one of those schools. The teacher that sponsors this political action call is Dan Matieta. She is also unable to be here tonight. Can you tell me, I want to bring you up first, so that you don't have to sit in. Abby Martinez. Congratulations.
I know there's one more on the way.
And there's four events going on here tonight, so, you know, it's difficult to get students. I'll read the other names as well, and if another student is able to cover it, we will recognize them. Tristan Palmerly, Sydney Dial, Sadie Theenarmonda, I apologize, Peggy Barley, Margaret Aylesworth, Hayden Carver, Joshua Lenez, Joseph Sidley, Jackson Nees, Isabella Richards, Gabrielle Peterson, Gabriella Higgin, Dylan Long, Cody Ruckelow, Anne Russell, Angelica Chason Pardanas, Elena Stan. It's a very active, large group of kids, and we thank you for taking the initiative to help get more boards enrolled. Thank you.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, which is continuing our RSP process. So, at this point, I think we'll ask board members to move on that side of the tables, see the screen, and begin the vote. You'll probably want to take your Chromebook with you, so you can vote. I'm just going to do that.
Okay, so, Richard and I, we're going to discuss the beginning of the Urbandale Boundary Committee process. So, I spoke with you guys a couple weeks ago when we had the enrollment analysis. My name's Jenna. I've got Rob with me today, also RSP, so we're both here. We can bounce back and forth with any questions, and then really try and go in to prioritize the criteria, talk about kind of these bumper and guiding points, so that when we go into the committee process, you guys have a set expectation, and we can streamline this process and have the best plan moving forward, so we come back to the recommendations. Really, we're all on the same page, so that's what the main goals are tonight. We'll talk through the process, and we'll talk through those next steps, and then try to get into the voting and really prioritize all these different issues. I know we've had, we gave the packet to you guys, and we talked about the different boundary criteria, so I'll walk through that, and then we'll get into the different activities. This is just a slide of RSP. You guys know us, Jenna and Rob. So, I'm going to start this by just trying to get us all into the polling software, so that when we get to the activities, we're all in there and ready to go. So in this case, we're going to use this platform called Poll Everywhere. So if you use your Chromebooks and go to this website, so poll, P-O-L-L-E-V dot com slash RSP meeting is how you'll access it, and then you'll see when the questions come up, they'll come up online, so. Everybody got that? Just lost Wi-Fi there a second. Okay, so this is sample question, just to get you guys familiar with the technology we're going to use today. So you went to that website, you should be able to respond to your question, your answer, and then you'll see it auto-populate. So, we've got two results so far, each in the lake. Mine would definitely be the lake, so. Okay, perfect, so then we are good. So, we showed this slide last time in the presentation. This is the process that we go through. We have today's board workshop, where we're going to set this criteria. We're going to talk through these different kind of bumpers to get us all going to the same direction. After this, we'll go into our five committee meetings, and we have those scheduled throughout the summer, as well as two public input sessions, and then coming back to you guys with the committee recommendation, and that's what we're, so that will be the process we go through this elementary boundaries. So you can kind of see this color coordinating of this graphic. That's going to go into those roles, who's going to projectivity, if it's us, if it's the committee, if you guys stuff this slide as. One thing that is kind of a pillar to the RSP boundary process is this concept of ACE. So, around every boundary process, around anything that's going to do with this sort of long-term goals with the school district, is this concept of academics, culture, and economics. So, when we're looking at boundaries, we know that there's academic needs, so we have to program, and that's for our students. We're here to provide assurance to the teachers and to make the school operating in the best way to serve the students, with that there's culture. So when we have families, they get attached to their school. We have students with their social and mental well-being operating in the school as well. So there's a culture element, as well as the economics, knowing as the district, we have to function year to year, need budgets and this sort of things. We have all three of these that are kind of operating at the same time, and we're always trying to take into account the students', you know, mental well-being, the students' well-being as a student and academic pursuer, as well as the district's longevity. So this next question is to say, if we agree with this culture, we'll talk basically that same explanation to the committee, so making sure that we're all in the same page with this concept of ACE.
As you guys are answering this, one reason we asked this question, we talked to you about this, is someone at some point when we go through this process, they're going to say, "Well, you don't care about the academics, or you aren't considering something that falls into the history pillars." So this is the rationale, to make sure that they know, hey, you know, we're talking about boundaries in numbers and graphics, but we really have some of these other higher criteria.
Because we've got one more coming in.
That would be yes, just say yes.
Okay, so, this next slide is going into these guided principles. So, something that we'll talk through are these different guided principles. That's one, why are we here, we're bringing the committee, we're going to public input. These are the principles of why we're doing this process, why we're doing it the way we are here. So, we're here to make this plan, district-wide long-range plan, so we're looking to figure out if it lasts the longest. We're trying to keep in scope what the long-range goals that you guys set as the board for your district. Kind of that academic space of the ACE concept, so we're here to provide the best learning experience for students at the classroom level, so providing the one-on-one communication with the public. We talk about student capacities of the buildings. We're here to provide the best educational experience and get them to finish lives. We have neighborhoods are influential, so knowing that as a community, we have different community organizations and neighborhoods, and that operate within the system, so we're trying to keep that the same and have that influence next. These are the ones, so we know that we're doing this at the elementary level, so our focus is there. We're trying to make natural, man-made boundaries, so keeping intact, though we're trying to keep. So all of these are just kind of example. We have that last grandfather student option, so that's going to be a recommendation that we come back to board, that will be your decision, say, grandfather, and what that kind of looks like, you'll see. Most likely, when we get into public input, that's going to be a main question is, here's the boundary, okay, what's the grandfathering, what are we going to allow, so something that that's going to come back to discuss when we look at that as well.
Jenna, before you go to the slide, does everybody understand grandfathering student options? Okay. The other thing I want you guys, this is where you can provide some feedback. If there's something that's not on that list that you find important, I'll just give some examples. Let's say you want all of the elementary levels to be packed, or you are thinking a different primary condition. This would be one of those frameworks to think about, like if you were in the same box, what, what does this committee, this work with? So if there's something we didn't have on there, voice what that is, and the conversation is that something that should be added.
Absolutely.
If not, you can ask your question.
Yep, if not, you can reply if you agree with these boundary principles. All right. So this next part is going to be prioritizing these criteria. So when we get into the process with the committee, we have many different options floating around, and we have many different committee members with almost different lenses when they come into this process. So neighborhoods intact, transportation concerns, the least amount, the most impact, all these different things are working together, and they're all important. So we know that we have this criteria that when we talk about redrawing boundaries, they'll come up, and sometimes they work into hand, sometimes they kind of pull against each other. So it's very helpful when we go into those situations that we have to prioritize for this from the board members, because it's going to be making final decisions come August. So, I'm going to kind of walk through these, and I know you guys have these in your packets, so kind of defining what these different boundary criteria are. So one, if we want the boundary to have natural features, and having that so that we don't have non-contiguous, and we don't have different islands. You can see in one example, all the boundary meets up with each other. We're going to keep it compact area, as in the district. Or we could do non-contiguous. So maybe a solution is, instead of redistributing all the boundaries, we just do a little island, six, one. And if that is negative or positive, that's something for you guys to think about when you're prioritizing. So this would be against that, so this would be stating that any boundary that we redraw, we're going to be using man-made features, we're going to use, you know, major roads and different areas, so that we don't have any islands and boundaries in pockets that are kind of distributed throughout the district. The next is demographic considerations. So we pulled many different tables and kind of analytics that will help guide this conversation. A lot of the time, what the, how that conversation goes, steers, what tables to be run. So for this case, I kind of showed some examples, we do demographics and socioeconomic, we do FRL student percentages, what the current would be, versus what the concept would be, and kind of provide that conversation, as well as type of units or residential units when we're moving to different areas, single-family subdivisions versus some multifamily apartments, talk through what that looks like for the demographics, and some race and ethnicity, transportation, so all different types of demographics. These are just a couple examples, trying to guide this and making sure that we have an equal distribution of students throughout all schools, and kind of keeping whatever the current demographics are, the same with the demographic concepts.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah, absolutely.
In that, it says Karen Acres, but that's Rolling Green, right? Like, that's the future Rolling Green? The year-round school?
They were just drawing numbers. These are just.
Okay. But I mean, okay, okay.
They were just literally, I was pushing numbers.
That's right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, all these examples, I, let's just type in numbers and just provide what this looks like.
Okay.
Okay, so just to clarify, we're going to draw boundaries for police schools, and that alternative, currently Rolling Green has their own district, and this portion, if they choose not to go to Rolling Green, those old set, and that portion goes to thirty. Are we going to keep that concept, where the alternative school, the calendar or whatever, it happens to be, has its own district, and the homes, the families that live within that district, then it's on that school, if they don't, they get redistributed to, or is that something from the committees?
We haven't used Rolling Green district for many years. It's strictly a choice school, so we will be drawing three boundaries for our three neighborhood schools, and Rolling Green, which will be located at the Karen Acres location, will continue to, just that. And so, next boundary criteria is duration of boundaries, so also factoring in how long do these boundaries last. So in this case, we, when we talked about enrollment analysis, we're looking at future growth, we're looking at these different areas of, our high schools, living in the neighborhood versus elementary. We'll see different projections as they move out, and how long these boundaries last could be the conversation that we want to have. So, an easy fix versus a very long-lasting fix, that's what this criteria is trying to get at. So we have those growth areas, we want to distribute them, and score that has less students versus more students, are kind of these considerations that the committee will all go through. Neighborhoods intact, this is a pretty important one, so trying to keep subdivisions, and most of the time, it's going to be how they identify themselves, so trying to keep intact neighborhoods if they move together, not break them up. So this example would be, if you went by the colors, it would be a neighborhood intact, you just drew the line, there's some parcels, and within the neighborhood, that would be breaking that neighborhood. So trying to keep that as a prioritization as well when we get into looking at these concepts. So what if we just put a couple of these houses over here, let's type, that we want to try to keep these neighborhoods aligned together. Next, projected enrollment, this, we talked about it this time, we do enrollment analysis, so trying to make sure that we keep our buildings under capacity in this grid that you guys identified, and that we're using all the available states for the best we can, so keeping all buildings balanced in this boundary process, around drawing a boundary in one school at 105% next year, the other one that's 65%, so keeping this important as well. Students impacted by boundary change, so this will be a table that we provide when we do different concepts of how many students current are going to be impacted by this boundary change. I don't depend on every concept, how many could be currently being moved, that's what this table is going to be showing. And it'll kind of show what boundary they're currently residing in, and then in the concept of they would be going to, so trying to keep intact. If we want to only impact 20% or less of the entire student body, or if we want to have the longest-lasting boundary, which would be a larger impact, you can kind of see how that criteria would kind of fit against each other when we're prioritizing. Transportation consideration, so this is something that you'll hear about a lot, is how close I am to school, how far I am, what's the transportation network to get there, so keeping, trying to check that we're trying to keep students who live closer to the school attending that school, as well as bus routes and efficiency. So a lot of the time, we want to make sure that we have one bus stop in and out of a single lane or something like that, so trying to keep this consideration as well for the actual application of these boundaries to the road. So this is just one example I wanted to bring up. I gave you all the information, and you can kind of see some of them are contradictory. So duration of boundaries versus SIBC, if you want the longest-lasting boundary, you may have more students impacted, and then vice versa, if the bar is, I want 50% or less of elementary students impacted, it may have, it may be just a five-year-long boundary. Those are just numbers I'm throwing up, which kind of show the example of how some of these boundary criteria, are they're all important? We'll talk through all of them with the committee, but when it gets to the situation of one of the committee's applying which way, and the other one was, this will last longer, we'll come back to this, of your guys' prioritization of boundary criteria. I think next, in the activity to prioritize, so I'll pause there to see if you have any questions about any of those, or how they would be applied in the committee meetings. Good? Okay. One thing that we want to talk about is bring up the public survey. So we talked about this in the enrollment analysis presentation that we're pushing this through, use this survey platform to survey the community. One, a couple other things, but mostly this right here, of what is the committee prioritization of criteria, what do they see, what do they think the boundaries look like? So in this case, one is the most important, and seven is the least important, and how they ramp them. And so, the public, and you kind of see, it's broken up by, 70% are parents and guardians of students, that we need top three boundary criteria for neighborhoods intact, students impacted, and capacity considerations. So, keeping that in mind, that this is the public's perception when they came in with these survey results. So this next activity, this is what we'll go through, it's kind of different than yes or no, instead you guys are going to drag and drop the different seven criteria using the arrows to prioritize from one to seven. One being the highest priority, seven being the lowest, and then we'll kind of see that auto-populate to see what this list is, all of your guys' applies. So the community replied with those neighborhoods intact, SIBC, capacity. So this should be live on your Chromebook, so you can take your time and try to operate that the best you can. If you have any questions, or if I need to skip by one too quick or.
As you're answering this, this is kind of somewhat big, right? You may not know how all of these several variables play with each other. Understeep, this just sets the framework. So, we may get through part of the process, and let's say you prioritize one criteria, this is values group, we may get halfway through the process to realize, hey, this is critical, let's say it's due transportation. We had these situations, whether it's in South Beach, Oak, A. K., Johnson, and Long Key, very similar processes run with them, that all you need is how you respond to what this looks like, and try.
Can I ask, is our current busing for elementary still, that if it has to cross a major, it doesn't matter distance for elementary, but like if you have to cross Douglas, you have free busing, or how is that working currently in elementary?
So we do have crossing across Aurora, because we have either crossing cards, or we have push button to be able to get across. We do not expect students to cross over Douglas right now.
Or 86.
Because they don't have the same types of opportunities to have assistance with us. 86 is a natural boundary right now, and so there's not, that is the line between a walk so and either paid or something.
Okay. So we just arrow up to the top.
Yeah, then when you agree with the one to seven.
Yep.
All right, that's everybody, end right? All right, so this was our prioritization of this projected enrollment capacity, number one, neighborhoods intact, then tie for third place demographics, and students impacted, duration of boundaries, transportation, and then natural features. We did it this? I think it looks good. Yeah?
We did not talk about what happened with the tie, though. I don't know if it weighted, if we're putting it on a scale, if it's tied here, how does it sound like?
I think this is more just a guide for the committee, too, so I was wondering, if one becomes, we have to stay between two days of this period.
Yeah, that'll be something I call qualitative, right? So let's kind of analyze this, just to understand. So let's say you have a situation where you get a better demographic mix, but there's going to be more students impacted, there would be conversation with the committee about, well, which ways out maybe more in how their qualitative approach? how they're qualitative approach? Then when it goes to the community, then they say, hey, we really like this demographic balance, and it's all right. But that's a great, great qualifier.
I think that's all I really got, so that was, we'll set this, this information's going to go straight to that first committee meeting, we have that in June coming up, so that starts the process.
And I want to leave you with one wrap up. So I took some notes of what you were saying, that builds more on the guiding principles, so focusing on, we're creating three elementary boundaries, I think it's important for them to know, that we're still going to have the whole trade development schools that relocates to carriers, right? And then I also added in that where you're going to continue busing in the areas that are true dangers. Right now, we're talking about Douglas, but there may be something that comes up that could be a future road that we'll have conversation, is it they change their situation now? Part of that conversation, that's part of receiving.
And Carrie, don't they vote on these later in the meeting to solidify that these are their official requests?
And what percentage of people responded to the survey? It was 500 and some was the number, but I don't know what percentage that is of who could have taken the survey.
It was just distributed, yeah, it was distributed to all of our parents, as well as the community, so it could be, so that number is unknown, we have just over 4,000 students, so 500 of 4,000 is not clear.
Okay.
But we don't know that all, I mean, they said about 75% of them were students.
Okay.
We do have some, we have some other questions in the survey, that I think you guys want to hear, and we're getting some more cross tapping and kind of some other results, so. Some of these other questions that we were asking, so should the district explore other steps, special programming? And we were going to type all this up in more of a survey report, those other kind of questions, but we asked to give those to you. But then we wanted to really pin on boundary criteria, that's what the point of this meeting was for that. So this is coming as well as some other guidance from that community survey results.
And to be clear to the community, too, just based on some of the comments that were made, like, we have no control over people that live north of Meredith, that's Johnston Schools, like, that is not in consideration, correct? Like, that is nothing that we have any input or say it to.
Correct. All right, that's all I thought for tonight, so thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, so we have Brian Jordan, who's going to give us a facilities update. Mr. Simon said to tell everyone that you really enjoy public speaking, Brian. Thank you for joining us.
Area A structural steel's complete now, they're still working on the joy, the joy start complete, that means about 80% done, that should finish up this week. Area A, slide one, deck seven four, was poured last week, we are getting a jump on that, that's actually a little bit early, and the slide one rig, first floor should be poured out this week, we were working on that last week, and the house inside the storm shelter, we would control the weather, they're working on that. Area C, gym, the indoor kitchen area, the pudding dark complete, the B C fire wall's complete, structural steel, joy's in deck is onsite started, we sent the gym joy's last week, long stands. Bearing walls, staves are complete, the mason's going to finish at the end, once the steel's complete. We did pour the gym floor last night, since we have started the joy's work, so that's kitchen and mechanical area, the mason's completed all the moving bearing walls, whatever's left, he'll do after the structures will finish, and the cooling tower foundation starts. Area B, the commons, footings are, footings and curves are complete, B D fire wall was complete on the B side, it's probably about 75% complete on the B side. And area B, all the footings and curves are complete, so basically we've finished all the foundations, so with except for the loading dock and the cooling tower, the deep electric on the front start. Storm on the site, storm sewer is complete, up to 90th street, they did refored West Road last week, so we did have that closed down, stripped out, the retaining wall's supposed to start next month. What we have going on, steel for upcoming activity, area C steel will start, or will continue to start, area B steel, mason's is completed, is the structural work, it's going to start, exterior work, work is working on, we'll have the waterproofer start here probably in the next two weeks at the first gym, if they pay, exterior perimeter is going to start on area A. Pretty much it.
Still a long time.
And we're still tracking it on time, so nothing, nothing causing any problems yet, so.
Okay, so I'd be, or eight, I mean, is simply a notification to the public about updating public enrollment processes. So we'll move into new action items. So may I have a motion to approve the priorities that we just established?
How do to approve priorities that we established for the last week? Anderson, second.
All in favor? Opposed, no? Great, thank you, guys. We'll see you again. Okay, any questions about the class link platform purchase? Okay. We covered that, thank you.
So, trying to say in my effect that I go a little here. So Class Link is a platform that will allow students and staff to have, it's actually kind of a one-stop dashboard for all the resources that they need, so we've got 600 websites, it seems like, that staff can really kind of do their job right now. Clever kind of helps, especially if they elementary, they kind of consolidate all that in one place. There are a lot of resources that aren't tied into Clever, that don't do the single sign-on quite properly, and the big reason for that is, the way Clever makes their money, they're free to schools, but the resources that want to be used, Clever has to basically pay Clever to do that. And so there's a lot of sites out there, a lot of tools out there that say, don't really do I pay Clever to do this, and so they're not on that platform. Class Link, on the other hand, is something that we pay for, so if there's a tool that we use, that we want to be single sign-on, and it's not already on there, they will have to do the work to make it single sign-on enabled for us. It also has more usability for staff than Clever does. And it gets some great apps, so for, there's a little better on the app, it's like, hey, I'm 600, so you think this will, but only 20 years, maybe we'll need to be paying for this, or maybe we need to be doing more professional development. I know Clever has some of that as well, but.
Some of that as well, yeah. This is actually, Clever's a free platform, Class Link is something we pay for, so it does have a few more bells and whistles, but another thing that made this really logical at this time is Heartland A E A is moving to Class Link as their single sign-on platform, and they already, their, I don't know what Sue's title is officially, but she's our student trainer, has already been working with her teacher library, and is getting that here, so it just, it just kind of makes sense to make this transition at the same time for both the academic side, but also the professional side, with some of the apps and things that we mentioned, that we use on the administrative side.
And one thing that, especially the younger years, really enjoyed by Clever, is Clever bad, if people sign on, showing the picture, and Class Link has that same functionality, so that won't go away.
Yeah, teachers like that, too. Littlest don't have to type in passwords, they can just hold it up to their camera, it's good for everybody.
So can teachers put things on in for the students, they can, they can equip it? And are we using it now? Is anyone using it in the district right now?
Class Link, not to my knowledge, because it's something we have to pay for, but with Clever, for example, teachers have customized their pages to include little apps that they use, they should still have that same functionality moving into Class Link.
This is a program that we used in my previous district, and it's happened, it is so, you can see the sign-in page, when you get into your computer in the morning, you literally sign in then, and that's it. Every single app program that we use will be on, and if you look at the next, it looks like your iPhone, where you have all the apps, you literally just click the app. We can create an H R folder that has all the perform, and all the different things that H R has, and if I don't want that on my desktop, I don't have to put it there, it's up here in the cloud, I can pull it down, so teachers can customize that, kids like that, they can, Josh's team in conjunction with curriculum can create a folder that has all the K1 and two programs in it, so that teacher only has to pull that particular one down. And I think it's, when we went to this, it was almost seamless, it was just such an easy transition, all the work is on Josh and his team, so that's why I believe we wanted to do this this summer, because the time in his team's schedule would allow all that hooking, and in the future, programs that curriculum wants, or any other department, you have to get that company to make sure that that will talk through everything in Class Link, and eventually, what we found is that if they want your business, they will do that, they can figure that out, and they will do that, what is it called when they talk?
The integration.
Yeah, the integration, so all the rostering, everything is all, it's just so nice to be in one place, though.
The other thing that I really look forward to, is kind of the opportunity for process improvement that relates to account provisioning. So right now, you know, when a new student comes in the district, Sandy goes on form, I kind of love that next period, good student, now it blows out of places, and when it exists under, they have to go, they do same form for on tech, I don't care, this one has the ability to, it's the identity provision, so they get, so their account is there, so they can put their account there, and some of those homegrown tools we developed ourselves to determine the process, go away, if not, okay.
So Josh, my assumption is, since you're standing here making these recommendations, that you feel a bit concerned about data privacy and accessibility of P I I are manageable, right? As I look here on the example, Gmail is, you know, listed as one of those single sign option apps, and I, you know, there's a lot of information that the district has no control over in terms of parting share students, faculty members on their district, keeping a lookout, so I just, you're confident that those risks are, can be managed?
I'll move to approve, class wait, platform purchase.
Maybe a second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? It's unanimous? Thank you, Josh. And Christopher? And Mark, you're there, bring him in to us. Okay, we'll move on to mental health. Okay, mental health specialist? That's one you want to.
Sorry, as you can see, it's simple, made an adjustment, had the recommendation of the board to increase of salary, did a little bit of research, and the state also reached out to several different mental health agencies in the area to kind of find out what was some of their, what was their salary range, et cetera, so it wasn't just an arbitrary number, we just kind of pulled out of the air, did some homework to make sure that we did what, break forth a competitive salary for someone to come in, landed on the $60,000 to $70,000 range for the year. Again, it does not include benefits, so I will have to have some conversations, we're learning to pay about the benefit option, do some of that was a competitive salary and bring someone in. Go in there. Move to approve the mental health specialist physician.
Anderson, second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? It's unanimous? Thank you. And we will move on to the proposal to board a stipend, a stipend to all the staff not covered by the legislature's or the governor's recommendation for a $1,000 stipend.
Thank you with the move to approve.
Anderson, second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, that is also unanimous. We'll move on to, let me see, the I T summer purchase. Okay.
That's the guess, okay. So I know, when I came up here the first time we presented this to you, I was asked a question, are you going to be able to go up this level this summer? And the only one thing that I answered no to was, the seller of the repeater stuff at the high schools and the other buildings. About two days after that order meeting, however, I got an email from my manager saying, hey, by the way, those projected saves plan today? Yeah, those are going to be available, I'll call it. So there is a, there's a, basically a step up model that could be available to you, it's a magnificent, in order to cover all the, some additional $24,000 to deal with buying that model. There's also a step down model at, I think it was like $599ish a piece, which is essentially the exact same thing we've been putting in the building since 2009, just if they were a breder. So since it's an initial funding, I'm bringing the step up model to you to basically request that funding, because it does, you know, it lets us take all the same options that they passed for, for same options, and higher, and all that stuff. And so if we approve the, you know, the basic package that brought you in initially, the model's basically stepped down to that lower level, which I obviously prefer not to do just because, again, we've been putting those, so that same model projector, and it's really since 2009, it's like, I have to one.
Josh, everything else is the same. Would the step up projectors buy us any additional time in terms of the need to replace, right? Because we're buying higher end now, we could get maybe a year or two.
Yeah, maybe just to perfect, I'll need, at least fills the sign-up, same four day project, become useful to put a bunch of others, they have that, so. But yeah, the full life on them is better, there's obviously just a higher quality detector because they're intended more for, you know, higher falling quite a bit.
So more now than good say, let's.
Yeah, yeah, well, perfectly, there's better, the time, the whole plant longer, that they do on the step down models, so. They will do a better job of overcoming the ambient life, or filing the provider.
Any other questions?
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Thank you for, thank you for all your work, guys. It's probably time to get new projectors here. And Josh? Okay, so we will now move on to the second reading and approval of the policy series updates. I've received no feedback. Other than the one question I shared. Okay, then to approve the 300 series updates. Yes, second reading, yes.
Anderson, second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay. And we will move on then to the second reading and approval of the new policy 222, recommending board treasurer be split from the board secretary.
Anderson, move to approve. Anderson, second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, and then a little redundancy here, we'll go ahead and appoint a separate role for the actual board secretary.
Anderson, move to approve. Anderson, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, congratulations, Julie. Welcome to the jungle. Okay, so move on to the consent agenda. Any clarifications or questions on this?
I have a question for Lauren. For, is there a possibility for us as a board to get an update on how many open positions we still have looking into next year? And if we can get, because I know everybody's in talks with other districts, how are our numbers of folks leaving compared to other districts?
I would say your first question, a little bit more clarity, is you're wondering.
Just how are we doing, hiring to fill positions, your people are leaving or retiring, are we even going to pay?
We are doing well right now, regarding, if you're talking about teaching positions, that's why I want more clarity.
Oh, sorry, my apologies.
On the associate side, we're still in the process of determining what our needs are, which is typical for this time, maybe you're going into summer as we get to that hiring piece. On the teacher side, of course, that's all happening right now, and our building administrators are getting our regular positions, as well as our market positions, filled at this time. Now, if something happened for the next two months, and there are still shifts, absolutely. We saw it a little bit last year with two positions that we ultimately didn't get filled. But right now, for example, those two positions that were not filled this school year, we have gotten filled. And we're hopeful that we will be a hundred percent filled with our teaching positions going into next year.
That's wonderful. Do we have, to the second part, do we have an idea of how we're doing with the number of folks leaving compared to other districts?
The only thing I can give you, again, a goal right now, which is that many districts are seeing higher levels of teacher, in particular, teachers leaving, or a variety of reasons. I can't say that our numbers are, you know, different or similar right now. I think we'll, we'll these aren't things that are shared out a lot in terms of just the overall. So I would be able to give a little bit more details to it, I think, this summer. And then like I said in our last board meeting regarding getting some more detailed information from those of our staff that are leaving with an exit report, which, you know, hopefully will be possible as well for you to at least engage with some of that information.
Perfect, thank you so much.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
May I second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. One thing I'd point out is we do have a reservation from the person. I thank you to all of you who attended the Metro West, that's very nice. And of course, you know, pay attention to the other upcoming notes. So we, well, we have one meeting in June, as has been our habit, so. So, we have a motion to June.
I'll move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. Nice meeting. Very positive. It's nice to be able to say goodbye to students.